I think that's mine probably. Yeah, there we go. Okay, I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, May 30th, 2023 at 7:02 PM. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for May 8th, 2023. I know that, I think, oh, Jim, are you participating or just viewing?
I'm a member of the public tonight because I don't have any of the exceptions that would allow me to participate as a member remotely.
Okay, so just for the record, Jim, who's an Arnold Ward member, is just joining as a member of the public tonight to view, and Yumila is not here, so we cannot appoint an alternate, but we do have a quorum. So there you go. Back to the minutes, I know that, I think everybody had a chance to send their feedback to Mike, and he compiled that all. Did anybody have any other edits they wanted to make? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine, all in favor? Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone who's joining us as a member of the public, either in person or on Zoom, to bring up anything that they want to bring up that's not already an agenda item tonight.
Susan Ainsley, covering for the Board of Trustees.
Hey, Susan.
Hi there.
Okay, hearing no other public comments, so entertain a motion to...
I guess I'm curious as to some of the people that have joined us this evening.
Well, we know everybody up there except Karen.
Okay, I'm just talking about people that are here.
Oh, I'm assuming they're here to fulfill their government requirement. Yes, there we go.
Okay, but I just mean, you know. Okay, great, welcome.
Are they from...
I was gonna say, usually we do ask...
Where are they from?
What school are you from? Okay.
We do usually sort of need, just for the record, so that...
Mike's getting their names now, too.
I was gonna say, that's why Mike's asking you for that.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
Move.
Second by Lisa, all in favor? Thanks. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for subdivision 2023-4662. VPA Development LLC, represented by Nick Williams, is proposing to subdivide nine Dart Drive Tax Parcel Number 46.1-4-1.1 into two lots. Planning Board will determine the type of subdivision and review the final plan. So Nick was, I'll give Mike a second. But Nick was here at the last meeting, we did ask some questions, we had some thoughts, and I know people thought about some things between now and then, but I know that, Nick, you're back, so did you or Mike wanna kind of bring us up to speed? I know that you guys have chatted in between, and Brent had some input, too.
Well, Nick, you want me to start first, Nick, on where we came about with everything? And then, okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
In between the last meeting and now, well, last meeting, if you remember, Brett Cross brought up the fact that it should be some way to monitor the stormwater runoff in a minor subdivision. One that's, this is the second time it's been done, so there's actually parcels there. I guess the compromise that Brett came up with is to have the applicant here, Nick Williams, incorporate two of the 18 better site design practices from the New York State Stormwater Design Manual, which you have in front of you, a sheet that has the 18 examples. I sent this over to Nick Williams, and it's up to you at this point, Planning Board, if you would like to have Nick incorporate two of these and maybe come back with a site plan that has, you know, what they would be doing on that parcel to actually, you know, to actually make it right for stormwater by using these particular design practices. And then I also have, did you get a result back from the county, it's a GML 239? And what they're looking for is just to have on the site plan where the wetlands are located, which are actually at the first parcel. If I can bring that up so you can see that. And we also have the envelope drawn on the site plan of that parcel. Mike, am I okay to share here?
Yep, yeah, go ahead.
Nick, I'll send you over what the county had to say, it's really not all that much going.
Okay.
All right, on the screen here, this is the new parcel. If what you do, Nick, is, you know, draw where you think the lands, where the actual building's going to be, on this whole parcel area, as I outlined, the only wetland is a national wetland, and that is over in this very corner over here, which has not been disturbed. So that's kind of trivial, but it's what the county's kind of asking for. Not that their request is trivial, but, you know, it's not gonna take that much to do. You and I can work together through that if you'd like. Other than that, it's how the Planning Board would like to proceed, whether you want to come back next time and show us what he plans on doing with those best site practices, and then go ahead at that point, decide whether the subdivision is approved or not. In the meantime, and this, at this meeting, I think you should decide whether it is a minor or major subdivision and vote on that.
So I had never seen, this is the first time from the county that we saw that identified building envelopes. So essentially, does Nick have to actually just put where he's gonna put his building?
Yeah, I mean, that's how I translate, you know, what they're asking for. I think what they're looking for is to see how close to wetlands the actual building is, which, you know, they don't, in general, they've gotta worry about the whole county, whereas we have the advantage of looking at the small area, and we know that where Nick is gonna be building on parcel C is nowhere near the wetlands.
Okay, I guess the only thing, given our past conversations on all of this, and we don't quite know what's gonna happen in the future, so we can't make our decision based on what might happen in the future, that I hope Nick is taking any possibilities that might occur in the future to be sure that, should those things come to be, that one of the things that I find very disturbing as being on the Planning Board for some period of time is, something happens today, you probably have something in mind, but maybe don't want, you're never sure, or you don't want to share with us, and then, down the road, oh, I can't, I can't do what you're telling me I need to do now because of this thing that happened prior. And I would just really suggest that you take a good hard look at that, Nick, and be sure that whatever thoughts you might have or dreams you might have for this whole situation, that you plan it carefully so that that doesn't come up.
And you're talking just basically in regards to stormwater, correct?
Well, just, not just stormwater, but yes, stormwater's pretty important, yeah, especially given the location of this, being upstream, you know, and uphill. But it's just, there's been a lot of situations that occur, and then, oh, well, we can't do that because we put the building there, and I just hope that, you know, whatever dreams you have in mind, that you have planned carefully, and are just gonna do what you think is really the right thing to be doing.
And that's completely understandable. We've taken steps, you know, towards possibility of, you know, what we might want to do in the future with each house that we have built, so, you know, and we'll keep that in mind on the next one.
Good.
Another positive aspect to this is, that is 1.71 acres, that's a pretty large parcel we're putting a duplex on, so there's gonna be a lot of the area that's not, it's gonna be under stare.
Right.
That's actually one of the 18, one of the 18 best practices, so they're automatically doing at least one of those.
Pat or Lorraine, anything you wanted to ask or add? So what I would say, and it echoes what Mike said, is, you know, tonight we can vote whether it's a major or minor. I think between, my personal feeling is we should ask Nick to incorporate two of these items into the overall design. At the next meeting, we can make sure that the resolution is ready, we can incorporate those two into the resolution and tie them to a future building permit, so that when Mike does go to issue a building permit, he can make sure that those conditions have been met prior to issuing that building permit. Thoughts on that?
Agreed.
Okay. Then in that case, Mike for the, or Wendy, who am I for, the major minor, we just have to vote whether it's a major minor subdivision, right?
Right.
Oh, Mike's shaking his head, okay.
Just make him move.
Okay, well, I mean, the code is pretty clear, it's the original parcel plus one is a minor, so, I mean, I move that this is a minor subdivision in accordance with our code.
Motion by Lisa. Second by Pat, all in favor? Okay. So then, that's that first piece of it, Nick, so what I would say is, between this meeting and the next meeting, if you're ready, work with Mike and Brent, if he needs to be included, Mike, you can get ahold of him, figure out what of the best practices. You can include more than two, I mean, I would love that, by the way, but, you know, let Michael know which are the ones you're gonna do so we can incorporate those into the resolution, and when you're ready, we'll be ready.
Okay, so is, are you leaving it up to us to determine which ones we're doing here?
Are there particular ones that the board is interested in?
What about the tree already? They cleared out some, I mean, there's no, I haven't seen any planting of trees down there, right, and all those trees were taken out, all of that.
This is not bad, I will say that he inspired us to move forward with a tree code because of that.
Okay, so he has...
He prompted that.
So I haven't read the tree code, but is there a time period where he has to have trees planted, because I haven't seen anything.
And this isn't a special permit, so the tree law is not...
No, when you're, tree planting is, are we talking just about the area that is potentially being subdivided, because we installed, you know, spruces around the pond, one dart...
I noticed it more when I drive by with the newest building that you have up.
Okay.
It looks really bare over there, like, you need to do some landscaping.
Yes, I would encourage you, Nick, and I think that's what people are getting at, I would encourage you to, you know, look at number 18 there, the tree planting for the, as one of the things I think that everyone on the board always appreciates, any developer who puts in, you know, as many trees as possible.
Okay.
And I think the infiltration thing is probably important, I mean, if we're talking about stormwater, I mean, I don't know enough about the stormwater, but I do know that we feel pretty strong about the trees, especially this time of year, everything is very hot to me right about now. I just think, oh my God, get some shade going here, and, but, you know, vegetated buffer and filter strips, I don't know, some of this, I think, well, yes, I would prefer more than two, Brent felt two, I guess, was...
That's what we've, historically, yeah.
I guess part of this is what can be done. Building footprint reduction, I don't even see how that's really a...
Yeah, what I would say, I think that focus on the ones in the third category, there are the use of natural features and source control for stormwater management, I think those are the ones that are most important to us, given the kind of, the, you know, current vegetation on that area and the unique character of it, as close as it is to the pond there.
I think you basically nailed it, yeah, 12 through 18.
Yeah.
And possibly two, number two, preservation of buffers for, at the point, but it's all the vegetation and the kind of natural stuff that we're interested in, I think.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, well, thanks, Nick, and like I said, we'll keep this open for the next meeting, and if you're ready, we can work with Mike, we'll have a resolution ready whenever you are.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks for joining us.
Have you ever asked how deep that pond is?
We talked about it last time, it's not very deep.
Not, like, what, 16?
I think you said like maybe eight, yeah, it wasn't very, it wasn't very deep.
It was actually deeper than I thought.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, open a public hearing for special permit number 2023-4675. Louis Hahn is applying for a special permit for approval of two beehives to be set up at 21 Cedar Lane, Tax Parcel Number 48.1-2-45.2. Mike, do you want to start us off?
I don't know, Wendy, you think they should, someone should move to open up the...
Oh, yeah, do we do that? Hey, thanks.
I move that we open special permit hearing for 2023-4675.
Motion by Lisa. Second by Lorraine, all in favor? Thanks, Mike.
Okay, just a couple of the usual suspects, I did, Louis did get the mailings out, I did receive the receipts for that, and this has no need for a GML 239. What, I have spoken to Louis about this, it's, the reasoning for a special permit in this case would be to, I know there are people out there that are allegedly to be, but not, so it was just practice to be able to put that out in front of everyone, send out the mailings, so that the public or anyone surrounding neighbors could possibly come and have their say. Saying that, we did get, running, you do have a letter from a neighbor, who, it's like a positive letter to me, he was all for the beehives coming into that area. Also, I had spoken to Louis about, along with a special permit, comes a couple other pieces of bags, your sidewalks and your tree law, so I'll let the Planning Board go ahead and do their stuff for this.
And Louis, why don't you, why don't you, why don't you talk to us a little bit about the project?
Sure.
Whatever you want to say.
This project is actually my son Jack's project, and so I'm here as sort of the allegedly responsible adult. And Zach, actually came down with a cold this weekend, so he's joining us by Zoom. But, yeah, so we live at 21 Cedar Lane, it's a corner lot down there at the bottom of the hill, and we'd like to bring in two beehives. I guess you saw in the packet that it's basically the northwest corner that we're hoping to put them in, which is pretty much the farthest from any of our neighbors then. And so the closest neighbor would be James and Claudia, actually, I'm not sure what their address is, but James actually sent us an email saying, unfortunately, I won't be able to attend the public hearing, we're joined by Zoom, nonetheless, we're very much in favor of your project, as your immediate neighbor wishes well on it, and look forward to having more pollinators in the neighborhood. So the, as I mentioned in the packet, really, these sort of dispersed pretty quickly within tens of feet of the hives themselves, and as they travel to collect pollen and nectar, they're usually traveling, say, tens of feet in the air, well above most human activities. And so people outside of, again, beyond tens of feet from the hive, I really generally don't notice any increase in the density of honeybees. So that's, I guess, in the background, we are working, we've been getting some support from Tom Seeley over at Cornell, he's a pretty famous honeybee behavior researcher, and so he's been a great resource for us as we embark on this, so.
We can talk about sidewalk and the tree law in the second piece of this, but open it up to the board for questions, comments? Go ahead, Lisa.
I finished questioning. I'm wondering why Jack wanted to do this? It's a big responsibility, actually, and so I'm just kind of curious, and I don't know whether you're speaking for him or whether he would like to address us.
Do you want, do you want to address the question, Jack?
So there's a few reasons why I'd like to, you know, take care of a few beehives. So I've sort of always been interested in bugs, I remember when I was in my first second grade, it was the first time I sort of took in a bunch of silk worms and stuff, and...
Oh, jeez.
Having trouble hearing you, Jack?
Sorry, is it?
Oh, that's better.
Okay. Um, yeah, I've sort of always just been interested in raising bugs, I have a lot of experience in it, for example, like, right across the table.
Uh-oh.
I have a few beetles in here. I've sort of, you know, been doing this for most of my life, and the main reason I want to do this project was because it's something that, or it's something I can do for fun that can also, you know, sort of help out the neighborhood a little bit, too, because, as you know, pollinators have sort of been on a huge decline because of human activity and stuff, and so, you see a lack of a lot of pollination in a lot of suburban areas and stuff, and so by raising the bees, it sort of helps everyone out, you know? And I also just, you know, thought it'd be pretty interesting.
Awesome, that's great, thank you.
No, it is a big responsibility, I thought it was, you know, pretty easy, and then I had a neighbor in another state who, also they're younger adult, and it was difficult, and they were not able to make it work, and finally had to ask that the queen bee relocated and the hive be relocated, but as long as you are working with somebody who is responsible, because, yes, we certainly need, I live just down the road, and I am outdoors a lot, and I have a lot, I used to have, just be surrounded with insects of all sorts, and I am just terrified at the fact that we, I maybe see a bumblebee, a honeybee, we had a natural hive and a dead tree, and it was wonderful, and then all of a sudden, gone. And so I hope this works, well, I'm getting ahead of myself, but, I think you know how I'm gonna vote, but I was very pleased that you thought it through and you worried about, because I did do some research as to allergies, which is one of the things people are concerned about, and the three bees, you know, honeybees, when they sting, they, it kills them, because they lose their stinger, but wasps can sting repeatedly, and, but nevertheless, when it comes to allergies, honeybees are, one of the, the top three were honeybees, paper wasps, and yellow jackets. But the other good thing is, the average number of stings a beekeeper gets in a year is 50 plus.
Oh, did you hear that?
I just want you to be ready for that, but they are also one of the longest-lived professions, period, so, it was very interesting, and I'm glad you submitted this, because I learned a lot.
Pat or Lorraine?
No, I definitely agree, I mean, I read your piece that you wrote, and it looked like you had done all your homework, and you're working with Professor Seeley, who is the bee guy, they used to call him that, I remember, the bee guy, and, I mean, good luck. I do have a question, though, how long do these hives last? Do they just keep, as a queen bee, they just keep regenerating for, what happens when Jack goes to college? Who's gonna take care of the hive if it's booked? I know.
He's gonna go to Cornell to study entomology.
There you go.
When I was in elementary school, I had really wanted to have beehives. The option where we were, so when Jack leaves for college, I will be happy to...
It's genetic, then, as it turns out, that's funny, that's great, yeah.
Anything you want to add, Pat?
Nope, but actually, I think that at least, sometimes a new queen will be, if it gets too crowded, and they head out and dodge.
Yeah, so it's not uncommon to actually intervene and replace the queen every, every couple of years, they do tend to sort of cycle through pretty quickly.
Okay, Mike, do you want to talk about sidewalks first?
Oh, yes, I forgot the hard stuff.
Sorry.
Special permit.
You're muted.
Oh, this is, but this is... It triggers, just for the young people that are here, because it's a special permit, we have other items in our code, and this triggers, special permit triggers kind of a checklist of things that we have to address, and in some cases, it doesn't always apply, but then we have to make decisions about that, and one of them in this case is...
Sidewalks.
Two things, sidewalks and trees, so, okay.
Let's start with sidewalks, Mike, that's easy.
Yeah, the sidewalks, it's really not me to start with, it's your, it's up to the Planning Board whether you would like sidewalk put in in that section of Cedar Lane, or like an escrow put in. My opinion, it's, it obviously doesn't make any sense, there's no sidewalk connecting there, but this is your call.
Yeah, so I would recommend when we do get the conditions to the special permit, if it moves toward, that we waive the sidewalk requirement out of the special permit conditions.
I agree.
Okay, that one's easy. Hey, trees, Mike, you want to talk about the tree law? That one's a little harder.
Tree law is a little bit more difficult. You are required to have so many inches of tree, diameter inches of trees on your property. Now, I've driven by this property, and I'm not sure there's room to put any more trees on that lot.
No, I don't think there is, I also...
One of the nicest lots in the village, I mean, the trees are gorgeous there. Unfortunately, the Planning Board has no way of waiving this, and by waiving, I mean having an arborist come in to actually take account of the diameter of the trees that are now existing on that lot, I'm sure they meet the criteria, but as I said, there is no way at this point to be able to waive this, so.
Yeah, so that is one of the requirements, we'll need a certified report from an arborist. We went through this with Zach, who lives on Kyuga Heights Road for something similar, and he said it was a pretty simple, easy process.
It was pretty straightforward, he's my neighbor, and so I asked him, because this is a flaw in our new code, which we will be addressing, but the only tests we haven't been to residents so far, and so it requires that you have an arborist count the trees, and again, that whole area has beautiful, big, gorgeous trees, and Zach said it was very reasonably priced, so unfortunately, that will be part of this until we rectify this situation, but...
And procedurally, is that if you were to support approval of the permit, would that be an approval contingent on certification?
It's a condition of the thing, yeah.
And Louis, what I can do is I will send you, the requirement is to have three, or 30 tree units per acre, and I will send you that list so that the arborist can, you know, verify trees, get how many units, and he can actually write you up something, and as the Planning Board had mentioned, another applicant had come in here to insist that we have to proceed.
And so my sense is the, you know, the board supports the permit, there are obviously a couple things, and you can work with Mike just to get them squared away, we always keep public hearings opens, public hearings open for two meetings, so we won't be voting on this tonight anyway, but if you are ready with all the supporting documentation, again, work with Mike, if you're ready at the next meeting, which is...
The June 12th.
June 12th, we can definitely fit you on the agenda.
Great.
Okay, but other than that, thank you, I think that really does, it sounds like a great, great project, and...
Yes, it's exciting.
I do commend you for, A, it sounds like there's, you know, some experience, you know, working with, you know, insects, beetles, bugs, things like that. working with, you know, insects, beetles, bugs, things like that. But also the fact that you engaged, you know, you know, an expert in the field. I think that that's great.
Well, the fact is that you respect bugs and like bugs. That's probably crucial too. I mean, they are living creatures.
Absolutely.
So they need care. Okay, great.
Great. Thank you.
Great. We appreciate it. Thanks. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the solar array draft law. So I would like to table this discussion for the next meeting. And after the last meeting, I did make all the changes that we had discussed in the meeting and sent it out. I haven't heard anything back from anyone. I even did a ton of formatting on it because I know that was just all wonky because we had taken stuff out and added stuff in. So I will resend it. And if people could review it and get comments back, much similar to the minutes before the next meeting. I think we're in pretty good shape with it.
Oh, was that the draft from May 9th? You know what? Was it the May 9th draft?
It was right after, yes.
Yes.
I did print it. I think I must have printed it and then forgot.
Well, I would say, you know, it's, I, I, I true confessions, this has been three weeks between our meetings.
This was a long break.
And whenever there's three weeks between our meetings, it's really hard because you
Get this out of a cycle.
I forgot to send up the reminder email.
And that's probably, I did.
And then it kind of gets away from you. So I felt the same way. But my real thing was, because, you know, that, there were minor things that we had that perhaps. But I wanted to be sure that this unified solar modification was in hand.
And Mike is going to take a look at that next week.
And as long as, you know, because that to me is crucial.
Oh, absolutely. Well, we reference it in the law, so, for draft law, so.
And so that's got to be really on.
Yep. Anyone opposed to tabling it until the next meeting?
No, no, because it's a special day for you.
It is. I'd like to not be here very late.
That's right.
Yes.
It's all coming back to me now.
I'm a year older today, yeah.
Doesn't he look older?
I do. Okay, anyway. Next item on the agenda then is the trustee report. That was mine. It was, it was a pretty short meeting. Both Ronnie, the mayor, and Karen, the deputy mayor, were both out of town. So they appointed Susan, Susan, the, I don't know.
Mayor.
Acting, acting mayor. I'm not sure what the exact title is. And then they also had to authorize the trustees to be, to be able to sign the various things that the trustees sign at their meetings, you know, paychecks, things important like that. So those were really the, that, that was the highlight of those meetings. I don't know if I've ever been to a trustee meeting where they had to do that. So that was interesting, but it was pretty quick. Anything, Susan? Did you want to add anything? Nope, she says no. Okay. Other business. So we were going to have a presentation by Yamilah about the seminar she attended at the Planning Federation, but she couldn't be here with us tonight. So I will open it up to other, other business. Other business not on the agenda. Lorraine?
I don't have anything.
I know you had some questions, but I know Mike answered them already, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Pat?
My only thing is, it's property.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, right, right.
Looking like a scrapyard.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
It's because all those trees, Pat, he thinks we can't see.
Yeah. But those are walk.
Oh, but I slow right down and stop in the car.
I, I can, I back up. So like, yes, no, I agree.
I did drive by, I drive by, so pretty regularly anyway, but I did make it a special point to go and take a look. Because I was like, what are they, oh.
Problem is, is a couple of things. The Quonset hut doesn't totally include, keep, the vehicles are not totally in the Quonset hut. And as I understand it, the two vehicles that are in the Quonset hut are considered storage units for a construction site. But I am now seeing this abandoned car that is not registered. And I believe there's something in our code about number, it's been a long time, but about unregistered number of unregistered vehicles being around. And if not, I think it's something we add to our list.
Well, right. And I, I
Mike's got his hand up too. I think he might have.
Pat, have you gotten close enough? Because I can't even imagine those other two vehicles in that Quonset hut are registered.
No, but they're considered construction.
Only because they're in the hut?
Instead of having a pod, instead of having a pod that you store things in, because I asked about that about two years ago.
Construction RV, along with a construction boat.
But Mike has his hand up. Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Mike. Sorry.
No, I was just going to say the two vehicles are inside the building at this point, the two construction vehicles. I mean, they're okay if they're inside the building. The, the car is, is an issue. If it's not registered, I have walked on the property and see if the car is actually registered. If it is, there's not a whole lot you can do about it. If it is not registered and unlicensed, I can ask him to have it removed. But he and I have been talking about this. We're getting back on track and it's a couple of the items that I'm going to review here in a little bit. So it is, it is ongoing. I have addressed the situation with David.
There was something I was going to bring up. Well, I rethink about that. Wendy, anything you wanted to bring up?
Nope. There's fire trucks going by, so I just didn't want to be too noisy here. So one item I just wanted to note from the comments from the county for the nine dart drive, it's, it's kind of difficult to how to comply with that. So I just wanted to raise that. I know you talked about it during the meeting, you know, how to put those building envelopes. I assume Mike will work with the applicant to figure out how to accomplish that comment so that you don't have to deal with the super majority.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. When I originally spoke to them, well, they had called me and said that they didn't, they didn't feel a need to respond because it was a minor subdivision. And they wondered why I had actually turned the application in. I said, well, because it's right next to Route 13, which is one of the criteria for a GML 239. And their response was, well, we don't really have much that we, you know, we can inject into this. And then lo and behold, a few days later, I got this letter. And so I did speak to them again. It was mainly to find out if the buildings were actually within any of the wetlands located on the property. And, and as Brett and I had, had talked about, actually, I think it was either the last meeting or the first time that they subdivided this, the wetlands haven't been served. They're over near Route 13 in the very south west corner. It really has nothing to do with the parcel that's being subdivided. So that's kind of what it was.
It's, it's, it's an odd comment to, to be sure there's compliance. Otherwise, you have to deal with that super majority. So I just wanted to raise that for the board.
Great.
Go ahead, Brett.
Maybe just to add some perspective, I think that they have a policy that they give every single project that same comments about the energy compliance. And so I think it's just in their mind, it's just, oh yeah, by the way, here, you know, add this to the, to the list. So it's, it wasn't a specific, I don't think that they felt, I doubt that they felt that it was a unique situation. They just said, you know, since we do it for everybody, oh, by the way, add this in there.
It's really the, the comments in there is about the, the need to have the building envelopes proposed that exclude the wetlands on the property. It's just, it's a, can be a challenge to identify exactly what those, those wetlands are.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to mention is I think everybody's probably been past their ton anyway. But if you haven't, the, the new park is coming along nicely there at the corner of Craft and Leaf.
I have not.
Oh, yeah, you should drive by the, the pavilions up, you know, very similar, very similar to the one on Warren Wood and, yeah.
We were fun last week.
Yep. Yeah, so it looks good. It'll be, it'll be a nice, having spent many a summer there, it will be a nice, a nice addition to that area.
Yeah. One thing that I, I did want to say is that as we're winding down on the solar, I know we were talking about moving on to short-term rental, but one of the things I really would like to do, especially based on the two experiences with Zach and the homes, that we cycle back and clean up where we see some problems with our tree owners. Because I still, we've done the right, I just feel so strongly, we don't want people clear cutting. And we've got the right thing going, but obviously there's some little things that need to be fixed, like the fact that we can't wave.
Yeah, I think, and that piece is a simple
Trees that I would
Should be.
Love to have in my property.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
So.
Yeah, be thinking about that. I think, I think that that should be something that we can tackle pretty quick and make a recommendation to the trustees for amendments to the local law. But if there's other things, that's, you know, the one glaring example. But if there's other things that, you know, you've been thinking about that came up during the, you know, discussion while we were drafting that law.
Just now, I, I think we should really knowing what, with the two experiences we've had. But I'm sure if we really go through it carefully again,
Yeah.
we'll see different things. And so I really would like to take a really hard look at that again.
Yeah. And then we can move on to short-term rentals.
Yeah.
And I think there's a couple of other small ones too that, I agree with Lisa, and I mentioned it to Mike before. Lisa brought it up, is that we should tackle that quick. We'll move on to short-term rentals. I think there's a couple of other small ones that we can work on in parallel with those two that are kind of like we've been doing, you know, when, before Wendy and Natalie was here, her and Mike worked on, you know, just a couple of small changes to clean up some things that have been antagonizing us for the
Well, they're flaws.
Recent, past.
Oh, frankly, from today's world, anyway. They maybe were fine at the time, but they just haven't held up.
And then, Mike, other than, other than these two things are the things that are going to be on the next meeting? Or is this, this about it? You're on mute.
Well, a couple of things I want to touch on. I did send you guys an email explaining that there's a couple of items that we need to be kind of prepped for. And I think at least one, even two of them, I think that a few of us should get together with Wendy and bring her up to speed on the long loss. Well, if we have enough time, we'll bring her up to speed on the history of these two items. So I will reach out. I will reach out to everyone and well, you know, we can't have, obviously we can't have a quorum. I will reach out to try to give Wendy as much information next week so that we're prepared for this. But what I really wanted to say was, I had spoken to David Beer last Friday and he wants to, he's shooting for June 27th to be able to have the final parcel plat. They've been working with Dandy and, and Brent and John to get a lot of the infrastructure settled. So the actual site plan is not going to look all that much different to you from the last one you've got. It's all of the underlying items that, that these guys have been working on. But what he would like to do is come in the next meeting and kind of have a review session. Because it has been a while since we, since we've looked this over. There's, I want to make sure there's a couple of loose ends tie up and also that we're, excuse me, that we're both on the same page. Specifically, David had mentioned sidewalks on the Loop Road. I just want to, I want everything to be clear and so there's no questions. The other item would be the end of July is when we sent a final for Eric, for Lansing Meadows to have the foundation in for phase two. My, it's my opinion, I don't think we're going to see that happening. But we're going to have to at least discuss, you know, the possibilities of what our actions could be or what the planning board's action could be. And without bringing Wendy up to speed, it would be very difficult for her to advise us properly. So that's, that's kind of the two things I have.
Okay. Any fleeting thoughts? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:46 PM. Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor?
I, is this the fastest one ever?
No, I think we've had some shorter ones. Thanks, everybody online. Ronnie, Brett, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
So any questions? Did you, you know, it occurred to me, you know,